Good evening, it's 6:45, I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the December 13th Cedar Springs Public School Board Meeting. And if everyone would rise and will recite the flag.
I'd like to raise the flag of your united states. And to remember that we're a one nation under God, indivisible, with a red flag and justice as well.
And if we could have a roll call please, and we do know that Trent Gilmore may not be with us. He's busy still restoring power which he's still managing. So we've left the seat at the end open for him. Should he be able to make it? Okay. Trustee Bowser here. Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Here.
Secretary Slager here. Vice President Schaffner.
Here.
President Reed here. Thank you, and we have established a forum and will move on to the adoption of the agenda. And I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. The agenda is adopted as presented. And that brings us to gratitudes. And I would like to start with saying Merry Christmas and happy holidays to the board. And thank you for your service and to the admin team and the students that are here too. And usually it's December and sometimes we have board gifts or exchanges. But we're having a little bit of COVID Christmas. So those things will be visiting us in January. So there you have it. We had a little health committee and then the health committee went to a different, you know. Anyway, we're just calling a little. Yeah. So there you have that, just in case you're wondering. But so still grateful even though without the gifts. Anybody else have gratitude?
I'll jump in there. You guys don't mind. Last week, there were a lot of band concerts, but they got to a time of the choir. Did the middle school at the beginning of part of the week. And then high school, the choir concert at the end. Both were great. It was fantastic. So really appreciative of those that helped and for the students that performed. Yeah, it was just a fun time.
Yes, I will echo that. I was only at the middle school concert, but everything went very smooth. So I too was thankful for that. And then I just want to add just the construction crew that has been here at the high school. There's been a couple mornings I've been here for drop off. And you know, some trucks getting in the way of the circle drive and dealing. They have to be with parents, kind of getting irritated and kids walking. And I just would not want to be on that crew working at a school during drop off or pickup time. And so I just, I just felt for them and was very thankful for their hard work in dealing with some of the difficult dynamics of that.
I want to echo Matt's as well. I'm looking for open record every time there's a concert, appreciative of the concert. I did want to mention, I really liked how they combined the choir and the band this year for the high school. Because around this time when you have kids that do both, it gets very, very, very busy. And it was really nice to have them together and just go at one time. Okay, get to see everything right now. So yeah, we have a great program, we have great parents and boosters and all. All one.
Yeah, I would echo my day of, well, my week last week was terrible. My week for the last 50, so. Last Friday was just a unique one with all of the air workings and things happening at the middle school. So I too was so appreciative of that time, just to sit in that chair and not only experience a room filled with music, but a room filled with joy. Like it was just a celebration and it was just such a great reminder for me of why we do this work. So it was awesome.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our high school representatives. And we have with us Julia, Kaisa, and Rebecca. And they're going to update us on the joy of the high school.
And they did promise that this is going to be the best, most exciting report that we have.
We didn't promise that. So we are doing an spirit week this week. Today was pajama day, as you can see. We had a great turnout for that. There were a lot of people in pajamas, holiday pajamas. Then we are also doing a holiday hallway decoration. Where we are decorating each hallway from first 50 feet and then it is being graded by teachers and. We are trying to recognize any and all winter holidays in that as well. Very inclusive there. We are also doing a Ellen Fox point drive where several teachers in the hallway have point collections where we are collecting dollar bills and coins and all the money goes to Ellen Fox Children's Hospital. And we are also doing a spirit week competition. So whichever grade level has the most participants in spirit week and has the best graded hallway wins a. Each person of that grade wins a little pack of, pack of points with several beginning things.
I think everybody's excited about the decorate. Good job.
And very inclusive of all celebrations during the winter season.
You're welcome.
Yeah, right.
All right, next on our agenda, we have our consent items. And I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. Consent items are approved as presented. And that brings us to close session. And are we ready to?
I am sending Mr. Bearwell text. All right, can we head down to the.
I'll entertain a motion to move into close session.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schaffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. We are moving to close session and we will return.
Thanks, sir. Taking of the turn. Better than you mentioned. No.
You can move on to the next. Yes.
And we're at discussion, item A, financial update with Mr. Chris Lahey.
Alright, thank you. So, uh, I'm gonna start with a brief little bit of an update tonight. I won't be brief as brief in January as we come to our, our budget of end of year this year. So, something to look forward to that Christmas holidays. Uh, in more book, as usual, you can take general fund, you can take bond fund. There's always like a little bit of questions there. I wanted to put a little brief on school aid fund update in for this meeting. Uh, I've spoken about it several times throughout the year, but general fund and school aid fund revenues continue to be up, not only over last year, but over projections. So, something, and I've got some numbers in here, uh, up from October twenty twenty, uh, two hundred and thirty-five million more paid in in October taxes. Or possible taxes as well. So, um, pretty good indications at this point is only about two months away from seeing the first glimpses of the, of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, budget that, uh, it's gonna be favorable. The home stock five hundred eighty-nine dollar per people increase this last year. Um, I know that's what that'll look like, but as we go into the January, since this revenue estimated conference, uh, revenues have been strong all year. So. And it's worth noting as well that there's still five point seven billion dollars in federal COVID money that has been unallocated. So, you think about all the S for two and S for three funds that we've spoken about, there's still five point seven billion. I don't know what claims are for that, but I don't really know how much is earmarked education. Just for, or come back. It's possible that the, uh, S R fund or COVID funding isn't happening. Um, investment, uh, numbers are in here. You can see, uh, we're still trending in a position where we're running C D R's from twenty-two, one fiscal year, which is great. And I just keep the pie in the sky for nineteen, twenty, twenty, three K then, uh, investment, just for comparison sake. Uh, one thing I did wanna also mention, uh, in addition to this, I, I wasn't there for November twenty-second for me, but I watched the map, um, for the sake of the minutes. And one thing that came up, and I just wanted to touch up really, really quickly, uh, I thought it was worth noting, is, uh, cybersecurity piece, especially with bond ones. That came up during the discussion, uh, we, uh, missed, we had gone to the conference and that is a important, uh, conversation. So, this is actually an email, uh, that we received. We can see the date here is October third, twenty twenty-one. And this is an email from the leader at, uh, Chief Financial Officer at Triangle Swatch, uh, construction, uh, and it says, hi Barb, I wanted to inform you about an update in banking information for some sort of payments on our invoices. Can you send a light copy of the electronic loan transfer? This is actually not the first time this is happening. No, and I can't zoom in here because I don't have the whole, uh, projector, but if you look at the return address, it's A R F at Triangle, put two D, dash B ground. And that's the first, I mean, first of all, I know that it beat R F, but it doesn't work. And, you know, so this was forwarded directly to me and I said, whoa, here we go. So, you know, forwarded right to Triangle, apparently that's the person. So, we do see, uh, I just wanted to put, just shine a little light and have a little discussion about that because we have seen things such as this already. Uh, and when it happens, we have a triangle or whatever, uh, somebody is, is. Take them and look into it. I think so. And also, I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on it. It's a kind of these behind the scenes things that we have a whole manual of, that probably is very well trained in, uh, but this was just a good opportunity, I thought, just to inform the board quickly, uh, that we are keeping this, you know, in the wraps and really making sure, this is just a quick, uh, look at the process for bond invoices. Uh, first of all, you know, for example, tomorrow, for C P U, we will have our bail for all, all the contractors. Really have to meet the terms of those all, all those contractors are, uh, you know, and then there's a whole process with this where I, I don't even look at a pay application until it's gone from the construction manager, signed off on it by our, our architect or engineering company. Then they forward it to me. I've got the, I understand, go all against people very well. It's nobody that I don't recognize their name. Uh, and then after that, uh, you know, I look through it, I compare it with our bill documents, I compare it with their bunch of, or reconcile all of that, make sure that it's timely and I know that the work is being done. Uh, it then goes off to our accounts payable, which again, it's involved in-house, so taken care of by our desk. Um, and then she processes it, she has a system where she goes through and make sure that I've signed off and all the signature there. Once again, it comes back to me through our accounting software and then once I approve that for the second time, this time electronically, it goes to my account manager, and she goes through the board. So, it's really handled and checked many, many times over. I just wanted to go through that, just for anybody that's interested in that, we're making sure that I can do it. Anytime you have any questions, please jump. But I thought, ah, man, it's been great to be here for that. Yeah. Just a little bit of detail. But that's all I have for my, I just want to update.
Any questions for Chris? To special item B, district signage purchase proposal with press.
Alright, so this has been something that has been on my list since I started. I'll blame a little bit of COVID gone in the way, uh, but spend most time driving around our district as I know, uh, we all do. You get, in my opinion, uh, any of a district sign. At first, you know, this is not part of the bond. This was not in the bond language, uh, and you don't wanna go, put new signs up when there's construction going on in all places either. So, this is what I'd like to say is phase one of the sign refresh. We're only gonna work with the exterior of the districts. As it went through from drive, um, seventeen mile, and then big phase two, once a lot of the projects are done, they will look at the sign refresh or inside the district. So, um, drove around, these are the signs that we currently have. If you're familiar with it, the high school sign looks pretty good. Uh, but the message board, which really is the most expensive part of it, is beyond repair. It's twenty-something years old. They no longer can connect to it. We tried to get that, you know, connected. It's dead and, and textured and all. Whereas in the middle school, electronic sign still looks very good. Uh, it works just fine. So, we would not be replacing the electronic portion of the sign. But we wanna be mindful of our branding and, uh, kind of have a consistency throughout the district. So, we see the minute those are supposed to be in the middle school. Uh, our signs at the other places are basically, if you can imagine where we have a lot of, a lot more technology, whether we're editing, we can cut down on some of those arrows that are somewhat confusing, at least from, from the exterior standpoint, and deal with those more inside the district. Obviously, a campus here, a lot of issues go bad. But so, first picture, second one next to the high school, two high school, middle school, you know, that's, that's our main corner, I like to call it, sign, um, something that I think could be improved upon. And then probably my least favorite sign in the whole district is a little to the right, that used to see the trails, uh, just pretty close to the front. So, that's our current state, post-state. Uh, we went through just a little bit of detail on this, uh, worked with Ken and Jeanne, uh, towards the end of work Ken is raising out and going into retirement, uh, to procure bids, basically set an R F out to, I think, six or seven different sign companies in different areas. To submit, uh, a proposal and a design for, for what they would be with our signs. Uh, then these are signs from Midwest Sign. Uh, it's, it's a company that I've worked for, or just to make a statement before, with before, uh, great work. The proposal came in really, uh, with a budget on these proposals, it's always been a couple thousand dollars, but we all agreed that we really liked their design the best. These are great looking signs for the, I think, the ground. So, uh, this would be the one that would go, uh, on the corner of North and Drive and Seventeen Mile. Obviously, arrows are going in the direct, uh, directions they need to go, but that would be changed. Uh, you can see up there in the top left corner, that's a lockup of what does it look like in the dark. So, this would be backlit LED. Um, they're supposed to last for, for longer than the sign, when the signs are supposed to last for at least twenty-five years before they fade or anything of that nature. So, really a great sign. But the, uh, the message boards are full color, as you can see. You can, uh, program them, the message four G's, so they can be programmed through anywhere, or they can be in the building right next to them. So, it's, uh. Exactly. So, that would be most likely, certainly, uh, to, uh, she could program all of the district signs for. Uh, so posing a sign there at the, at the main corner, again, branding, we want that to be consistent. So, this would be the new high school sign. Looks the same, so it's a Seachill's High School. I did look at some other bonds and, uh, some other colors. That read for a school type of furniture, they, they really advised against that. Right. So, um, this is the first date, and very similar, pretty useful. This is the middle, middle school sign, identical, but we would use our existing message board. Basically, old message board right out of that sign, looks great. So, you can see that these signs, and I got it out of it later once, uh, in relative regard, uh, twelve, thirteen. Uh, under four inches tall, uh, you know, so that's, that's nine feet tall. Uh, and eighty-eight inches long. So. Inside side, like, uh, like, you said, backlit elevator, most of them. Um, Beach Elementary, there's no sign here. This is a smaller sign. There's obviously no message board on it. It's just a running sign. It also say district offices, a little John McSiders, so we can prepare for what red off will become. Who will be using that entrance right there, uh, at the corner of the top drive? So, that would be second quarter. There, there, it's not a goal right there on our, it's, it's. Close last one. See View Elementary, that's gonna be the main drive for See View, and it would just say See View because of how we've decided to change those district drives. That's the amount for See View, which should be leading to every other aspect of the district. And so, relatively simple, but you can see they're all the same style. They all have the same brand, they all have the same logo, same colors. So, whatever. So. Um, I put the dimensions on here. I certainly won't retool again, but, uh, very high quality, you know, they will last. What with the black sign because the whole fade over time, it's all purple. And I've seen a similar sign, but yet I didn't work with Midwest in a previous district. It looked quite fantastic. What, what, uh, pricing looks like. So, I put the dimensions in. Each one of the message board signs, the high school and quarter, will be twenty-two thousand two sixty-five. It's a free price. Uh, some of the other quotes we had, uh, electronic message board alone, it must be in excess of that. So, to get the, to get the, and the message board, it's a great price. Uh, just the cabinet for the middle schools, they can install message board, it would be just over thirty thousand. Over the size, size five thousand six eighty-five, installation will look just over seventy thousand dollars for this project. There will be some added costs to, uh, electricity, to the, to like the, to the beach, but paper, uh, electricity. That's not. The plans for you is if you notice the one, of one entrance that's not really in here is the entrance that we tried to write off. That would be added later once we're really good. We're noticed, this project is, is able to be funded by state, by the, so, so that, so that just over two million. So, this is just one of those things. And this is the first period, just wanted to discuss with the board. See everybody felt about it? You wanna move forward? Sign. Questions being asked.
It looked great. You mentioned electricity. How much extra electricity would we have to pay?
It's going to depend if you're gonna put it up as service box or not, depending what we can look up to essentially. So, we, we talked a little bit electric, I think for a volume, all the sides together, probably looking at ten to fifteen thousand, sort of look at electricity.
I mean, like monthly after it's all.
Oh, oh, sorry. I don't know. Uh, it's a great question. The fact that they're LED, don't feature a lot of electricity, but pretty efficient. Uh, that's something that's certainly looking to. Current board at the middle school LED as well? I don't know. I don't know how old that board is. I just wanted to, for consistency across the district, right, we have consistent, consistent book, if that's a different. My thinking on that one was, it's still usable. So, you know, we'll add that, we have the same frame, we'll have the same box. Uh, and then obviously, once that one is end of life, that's not different, but it's the same type of. But to, but to scrap a still working message board just seems, I think the message board will, is, you know, obviously it's supposed to be lost. Yeah, so, yeah.
And then you, you, I think you said this, this would be phase one, just have the outside of the district. But I'm sure you haven't done research, you really don't have any, uh, concrete plant that's gonna happen within the district. But are you gonna come back and ask, ask us to commit to another hundred thousand once we get inside the, the, uh, campus? I mean, I'm not asking for a dollar.
Yeah.
I, I'd like to know a little bit more about what the future would be.
No, it's a great question. So, the way that, I mean, we've, we've spoken about it, it was possible that there's going to be some dollars in the bond because obviously, as we, we do, See View, for example, what we do with the entrance for that. So, if there's some leftover money there, we'll be able to put that into signage in each one of the front of that building. Uh, I don't anticipate it would be this much because what we'll do inside the district would be a form of a bonding sign. So, I mean, there'd be no reason for message boards. Yeah, directional signs, which are relatively expensive. You know, if we look at the cost of a, of a very, you know, pretty large seven, seven foot by six foot bonding sign, fifty-six hundred dollars. So, if we're thinking, you know, most we do is, is a mining sign right in front of trails, one right in front of beach, which is, obviously, that's gonna be a few years out, because the instructions are in there. Year will be, maybe, I think we could look at it all, come see, for about thirty thousand dollars by the time you get the, the directional signs. We have a pretty good, you know. And again, that's, I mean, this is the work of this entire body, right? This is just me proposing this. That's something that I think we want, but, uh, certainly something that we can.
Fun size. Sign.
That was a conversation that we had with G O B, uh, techs, um, and we just, we started reaching out to aliens and, you know, we have a show and say that's our font. So, that would be the font of the signs. And then as we, you know, update everything of that. Just trying to get the red one out there as much as possible too. I mean, that's, that's our logo. That's our language. So, you know, at the middle school, we've got the C S. That's great. If that's not, you know.
I'm kinda curious, and it's, I don't think it's a decision that we're gonna be involved in, or gonna make a decision. Do they give you a lot of different options on the actual structure, the monument, if you call it, or do they say this is really what you would want for?
Yeah, each vendor just kinda gave us a, hey, here's what, here's what we pitched to you, basically. You know, um, and that's not to say, you know, if we wanted to put brick on the sign or something like that, we could certainly do that. The tribal process.
But. I just curious how, you know. But I just curious how, you know, how that comes out, because if there's four choices, and you've selected this out of the four they offer? Or they just said, based on our experience with schools, would you be, this is, this will be some good.
Yeah, more of that, you know, I've I've actually had somebody who's have done it where they don't even design one for you. They just say, hey, here's some signs that we've done, like directly to doctor's offices and things that they've.
Drive over them.
Yeah, so, and.
And it's it's a brutal sign.
Yeah, that's that's kind of my thing, you know, it's a very fast refresh. Certainly not.
And you don't like the mind vent to distract from the message? Presenting.
Well, that's a lot. It's presentable, it's very basic, it's. Doesn't take.
So the message boards would be like an app on your phone? Is there is there any talk about? Just talk about cybersecurity?
Yeah. No, I was thinking that question, but I'm uh, yeah. I honestly don't know what this thing about how that works. Um. I would think that it's locked down. I think that. No, I'm not saying it's that, we've all seen those. We've all seen those IDON signs that people have into it. I'm not gonna say it's not possible, but.
But if we have a student that can figure it out, that's a positive too, right?
A scholarship to it might be, right?
Yeah, so um I think we'll we'll do our best, obviously, having message board signs isn't something that's kind of pretty. So I think we probably got that pretty much locked. Uh the the church right across the street for us there at the O, recently put up their message sign. I think somebody hacked it, because I noticed a week or two ago, said, oh, there. Pretty offensive for me. But the funny thing is, the pastors, I don't have a statement, so. Pretty big of a thing too.
Well, and possibly for our signs, people have very much appreciated the church sign.
There's a thought we can do, but it really doesn't just serve the district. In the pool layout side, we could go to, there's all those, the layout of our campus. We've really got three weight locations.
Uh it's a quick question, the logo that has purpose potential product. Would we? Consider taking the purpose potential product off of them, just in case of a future. You know, we're talking part of the picture aside, that's all, some changes. Just a thought.
Yeah, and to the same point, it really doesn't make a lot of sense, like Seater Schools, but it's schools that are. Yes. Yeah, certainly. Because it's honestly. Yeah, the ability of us. Just in contrast to the other partners, Seater High School, I don't think anybody's gonna see it. Yeah, right. Yeah, I think it would be maybe.
Really, it's still the black circle.
Yeah, just take the light side of it, yeah.
That matches just weird stuff with the scene. If it changes.
I did want to ask one other question. So it's filmed with the red one, so. Don't need to add that on there. Something else, or maybe something like. Just for thought, no need to talk about it right now, it's something to think about. Uh if you do want to move forward. Somebody just got an email or. Discuss.
I'm super happy. That sign going into Cedar Trails, this looked terrible for a while. Every time I'd see that, I'm like, we need to do more. That's just gross.
So on that topic, public talks, it looks like.
Yes. And that's something where we would be consistent, you know, I think some of that stuff will, I don't know, once we get through it down.
Great, we'll get into the discussion item C, elementary and secondary school emergency. That's our. Present.
So this was something really we presented our last bill. Remember, we. Continue to take that input from all stakeholders. Um Stephen's workbook is actually our application um that we input in next, so it is completely absent. Um that's an application that needed to be submitted by December fifteenth. They advised the districts to not wait until December fifteenth, because the message is. You missed the deadline, you missed the points. And recall, it's two point seven million dollars. So we did go through, Jen and I completed it, we did air checkers. I I did. I did uh Stephen emailed today, there's nine hundred to nine hundred and fifty different school districts and public school academies in the state of Michigan. Four hundred and fifty four districts have yet to submit. And well, have not even initiated their application. So. That one's a two years, yeah, so. Can't waste a little last moment, but uh there are also, this is really just, uh, you know, for for your review, there's a lot to this document. It's an eighteen page document. Um Jen and I worked worked together on the uh narratives that we had to input it into this. Obviously, on the budget as well, uh for all same things that we presented to the board, and discussed with all the stakeholders previously. About what we're into this. This. Right up. So it provides us the most flexibility, quite frankly. I'll be going through it again, uh but we have our champions to to help with instructional learning laws. This was both that for the next several years. We included uh teachers to produce class sizes over the next couple of years, so we can continue interventions and make sure that our classrooms are filled up and. Those those. Critical mass levels of students in them, uh we did tie in technology as well. That's the classroom. So got that in the application. So I can certainly provide more detail or less detail, I have a budget spreadsheet.
And our last discussion item, we have item D, Cedar View Construction Bit Patch. Oh.
That's one for people. All right, so. Interview, so See View is up, um included to this. Uh this is just something that we're gonna need to take action on. On January tenth. So tomorrow is actually our bit made. Coming at ten AM tomorrow, and we will be off and running with all our contractors. So this is a quick five slide presentation. This is where we started this interview. You may recall, this is the bond board that uh that was a part of the election materials, and I certainly will go through everything that's said. It's funny to look at now, and I remember this initial conversation, I'm sure Scott came too, about the new entryway, and we started in that corner there. And we we finished with another entryway, this was a, that Scott shared with everybody at the last board meeting, was our facing diagram of the See View Project, so right here is going to be our new entryway. See View, so I think. So really, there's not a whole lot to this presentation, it's just a uh, it's a it's a heads up and a special for everybody that would be taking bets tomorrow. And we're gonna need to take action on that on January tenth meeting, so. Here, this is just the uh proposal for G M B and Triangle that went out. This was posted on November eighteen to nineteen. Thanksgiving, posted it to the state website for all the different trades that you see down there at the bottom. And uh this is our timeline, so we have pretty good meeting on the thirtieth, proposal's due tomorrow. Uh we will have posted fifth interviews, I'll be doing those electronically via Zoom the next three days. And uh bring everything to you in a nice wrapped up package. On January tenth, hopefully I'll be able to give you the news that will. Will see your own budget, although. I didn't really emphasize, I have a lot of information for the districts. So. All these recommendations, just above for. Mine for this is. Just get all the back. And if you recall, we did purchase some of the equipment.
Thank you, sir.
We will have our official students come back.
All right. And. We have to show, and we have all policy updates with staff.
So included in board book are seven policy revisions that Yola has put forth. That's the fall twenty twenty one. Set of revisions, they go through, uh do revisions or replacements, they do one set in the spring, they do a second set in the fall. The seven revisions of the seven policies that we're looking at are simply revisions. We're not doing any replacements or any significant changes. There is uh an overview that's included in board book. Um on page three, it goes through each of the policies that we're touching, it just gives you an overview of the why behind the the revision. And so we can go through each policy one by one, I can answer any questions individually, even individual that you may have. Uh but really, they're straightforward uh straightforward recommendations.
And they're basically technicalities that are not going to change how we do business.
Correct, yeah, technicalities are just ways to make our operation more legible or or uh or user friendly.
I have just a couple of things that need to be noted. Um under number one, uh zero one six seven point three. Public participation at board meetings under H one, it uses the word repetitive. And I just wonder, I I just wondered if you could comment on that a little bit, if what the issue with that was.
So what that piece does, and we don't do it, but what that is, is if if, you know, you have thirty people making the same comments. The board would have the ability to say, you know, that's that's something that we've we've already heard. Uh and we we appreciate that.
Okay, yeah, that was my only, I guess, maybe concern, or just wanted clarification, because, I mean. Personally, I mean, I, yes, it might be repetitive, but I believe, you know, everyone has the right to keep sharing, you know, to to share, so I wouldn't want to limit the number. So for me, repetitive meant to me, if someone was like reading the exact same paragraph. Like if somebody's talking, we tell them something different, they're all words, to me, that's not. That was, that's how, that was probably the one. Or be the same law that's already been read, or whatever. But that was my takeaway. And it wouldn't really, I mean, if I'm understanding correctly, I mean, it's not changing how we're doing it currently, so. Okay. Can I give you my next thing? This is just a grammatical thing. Um but number six, eighty three twenty personnel files. Employee is singular, and then the there is plural, and the his her was crossed out. Um but I just wondered, because that's not consistent, and I just found that interesting, because then in eighty three thirty for student records, it uses the he she. So I just want to be consistent and grammatically correct of that.
Yeah, that's usually shared, but.
Yeah.
I I would argue, though, that his her doesn't necessarily include everyone. Because there are people that don't.
Well, so in the student records.
No, I agree that they should be consistent.
That's what I, yeah, it just, the consistent, yeah.
So that was eighty three twenty?
Yes.
Eighty three thirty?
Yes. Yeah.
And then? Just the two of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah, you'd think with all the eyes, I mean, this isn't just us, this is, you know, Yola is a very broad reaching organization.
So, Brad, would it be the pleasure of the board to bring those two back with the changes? January? Just makes change. It's not a correction. Oh, thank you. All right, there you go. Perfect.
Was it supposed to be on?
No, it wasn't.
Another.
I hate getting off target, no. It's perfect. Anything else? That's not a correction. All right. So, okay, we lost that. All right, so that brings us to our last discussion item, January organizational meeting. And we did put in board book. How the organization meeting is typically gone before or starts it. And then we did put in there a proposed meeting calendar for the upcoming year. And part of the thought process was we arranged support sessions, so they would be focused at data points where we would be with the COVID model of education, that to data piece of personal data information. And those were strategically placed.
So the thinking was August to capture any late summer hires for approval. Um and then uh end of November, we'll have that first data site completed. And so we'll be able to provide for the beginning of year data review. And then um in the end of March, we'll be able to do mid-year data review, and then June, we'll be able to provide you with an end of year data report. In terms of just overall student growth.
And the other part that we would note too is if we needed to add any. We can do that for the bond or. Those sessions. That was the. And. For the admin, we're hitting our target pieces, not just because we're on the schedule. We'll try to be thoughtful with that.
I love it.
And then the other thing is, we will be having discussions about which offices we hold, if we stay the same seats, or what we're thinking. So we've been pretty upfront and open and talking with each other over the years, so I expect that will continue, and. All right.
Thank you for your workup. Thank you for your workup.
You're welcome.
Let's go.
Yeah. Okay, so that brings us to public comment, and this is time with board hears from stakeholders. We have three minutes scheduled, so. We have three minutes scheduled, so anybody who'd like to address the board this time?
I have Michelle Guppy, and I didn't know if anyone else wanted to share, but Michelle is going to come up to the podium and, and you can share your, your thoughts.
Pretty good. I'm going to read some more excerpts to you, guys. My eyes droop like I'm all fucked up. I made it so far, despite how it has fucked with me. Like a fucking villain, getting drunk in there, a drunk fucking baby, not even a baby, a little fucking tent full thing. When they wear their shit. They wear their shit, they look at me like I already did some shit, so I might as well do the shit they're looking at me like that for. They'll Indian shit to make money, motherfuckers. What the fuck, three D printed gun, shit. If you post bullshit, say bullshit, people like you, it's fucking Norwegian. Big fucking police system. All your fucking shit's in your car. You smell like you ate shit, who the hell let you bite your pretty tail? Don't give me snake eyes, you bastard, she said, just because you can't turn a damn screw. I'm shit, said Sonia, that's no good. This is a good day to die, you know, oh, yes, I know. Imagine if I came up to the microphone or podium to tell, um, and started talking like that. Every other word, the F word, or some other profanity, it would be completely unacceptable and rightly so. What if I continued even after I may have been asked to stop? And warned if I continued, would I possibly be removed if I refused to stop talking like that? Then why are we going to give this to teens and require them to read this? It is completely unacceptable. It has been almost two months since the first time we kept some excerpts, excerpts written to you from Mrs. Mueller. And still, day after day, week after week, this is still being used as curriculum. The next board meeting, following when Mrs. Mueller read the first excerpts to you, Trustee Gilmore was just talking to the board, he ran here, and he was just talking before the meeting started. And he said, maybe I'm going out on a limb here, but I found that very offensive, did anyone else find it offensive? Every one of you, the one raised their hand. I'm a lunch lady here at the high school, I make thoughts for the kids every day. How would it be if I asked the kids, what the F do you want in your soup? Do you want some apple pickles, or how about some apple lettuce? If I talk that way to the students, I won't make it through the next lunch period. And to get school policy, with staff and students to talk that way or use that kind of language, then why is it okay for them to read it? The revised school vote assigns responsibilities to the school board in setting curriculum and courses taught in schools. This even sent this on Cedar's blog website. So you, the school board, have the authority, the opportunity, and the responsibility to change this. You have the authority to remove people to the media. You guys run this, and you run the show. And I, they have to ask, if not you, then who? And if not now, then when?
Thank you.
I do not have any other pages, Carrie, that you want to share or?
I'd like that you put it on the stomach. Um. Well. I, um, I would. I mean, I didn't come here, and I don't really like to talk.
You don't need to, if you want to.
But there is a, the number one, the public participation at board meetings, I think that that is a concern. With people, you know, in, in general, if there's so many people commenting on the same change, it's a concern for group parents. A better right to say something to their representative, that they will like. But it, it's just like two times. Thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So we're at action items, and our first action item for tonight is the elementary secondary school emergency relief, also known as Esser three. Final point, I would entertain a motion for as presented. So move to support. Any discussion? Having none, Vice President Schachner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries. The last action item is from our close session, and it's regarding. Student number twenty point twenty-one oh four. And I would entertain a motion.
Uh, I would move to, uh. Expel the student for the remainder of the second semester of twenty twenty-two school year. And allow the student to be. Considered for. Re-remission or, uh, coming back to Cedar Springs with. Evidence of.
Positive.
Positive behavior. The students will be allowed to enroll at my school tent online. And continue the education. Yeah, I think that's the motion. Sorry, do you want me to clarify that?
There was a lot.
There, there was a lot of that.
Yeah, I think as recommended.
Yes.
When, so would you say as recommended?
That's fine.
Thank you.
All about certification.
Yeah, that, that worked. So that motion was made, I'll support. Session. Vice President Schachner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide?
Yes.
Justice Revard?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries as recommended. That brings us to the communication portion of our meeting and. Already communicated, talked about the COVID Christmas hiccup and coming up for January. So.
Uh, Vic, I'm very grateful that we're, we're still rolling, every day is a gift, so, uh. It was, we just wanted, we're, we're, I'm very mindful of the number of staff who are, who are sick right now. So far, we're holding our own with substitutes. I am very mindful that it's, we've got a lot of gaps.
In administration. We have some sitting here every week too. So there's a lot of juggling going on, and, you know, trying to meet tight tails, but. We're seeing, from my perspective, in my industry, we're seeing some people have light cases, but other people have illnesses, it's lasting for longer than the people. So we're starting to create gaps in my.
Yeah, yeah, so trying to pick up the pieces and support one another and.
As much as, yeah.
Yeah, and people are working from home while they're sick. Really trying to do our best.
Were you able to point some middle school teachers in today, since the middle school was closed?
I don't know that we need a teacher today, and we. Yeah.
Nice.
The last week, we were very careful, it's. Buffalo David.
Yeah, and really, it's interesting, there's a different vibe right now than there was before Thanksgiving, you know? The crew was tired. And, uh, and it's interesting, we're in the process of taking a look at, like, first looks at calendar for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and just trying to be strategic around. And how can we make sure that we're building a framework in such a way that it enables people to stay fresh? Physically and emotionally. So that should be, hopefully, kind of soon.
Yeah, we had a good discussion with CSCA last week, and they're kind of taking it back to their leadership right now, to see what.
Middle school power back up? Middle school power. Middle school power was on this morning about six o'clock.
Oh, no. It was such a drag.
Within thirty minutes of.
It was such a drag. Yeah, Vic and I were texting at like four fifteen, and then, uh, four thirty passed, and then, you know. He said, if you're still saying it, we'll be back on it till eleven thirty, so we made the call at a little after five. And then, um. A little after six, he sent the text and saying, lights are out at the middle school, and I'm like, no. Look, my bad, you know, you can't.
Yeah.
You just can't. Yeah. Close, Kevin.
Can everybody rally around and come now?
Right.
Yeah, but, I mean, you always try to look, look for the bright, the bright side, right? So one of the things that we learned, uh, today was that GRAIL is no longer functioning. So GRAIL was the system through which districts submitted their closing information. And then that was transmitted out to the news agencies, so television and radio. And I wondered why, uh, our GRAIL messages didn't go through in the, earlier in the year, uh, we had a couple that I pushed out on key related closures. And it didn't show up on WTA, it did show up on Fox, and it didn't show up on, uh, WWNT and Kellam Zoo. And, and WZCM went with their own kind of GRAIL white system, so I've got to go in and, and send that, and set that up separately. Um, but today, uh, we realized that GRAIL, uh, Amy called, uh, Fox seventeen and asked them why they didn't run our message, and. They said, oh, GRAIL is, they're not, they're not doing that anymore, it's no longer being used by any agency. So. And so I sent a message out to the other region one superintendents, and I said, hey, did anyone know this? And they're like, no. We thought that it was still the, the route to go, so we. We learned something new, we're, we're going to be ready for that first big snow.
So they don't use that system, but there's another system.
Well, there, it's, it's really, we're going to have to go individually, you know, and that's where it was a hiccup today with WZCM. You know, they, they have, um. Drop down menus, so you can choose your options, but they didn't have middle school closed with power on it, all others linked open. You know, and so I went into the little option box and typed in my own message, but they failed to identify that, they just went to, they just listed us under. Closure or delay, they didn't say we were. They listed the district, and so there was, we've got to help them work through some bugs as well before we get a big snow day, and it really confuses people. But, you know, really, the, the school messenger system with the emailing and the texts are, are, that's really the, the number one way to get the point across, but. It's just important to, to try and utilize as many means of communication as possible, because not everyone has a cell phone, not everyone has, you know, access to. Email a comment or a text, uh, mine first thing in the morning, but most people do have a television, and so that's why it's really important, really. Are mindful of that, uh, mindful of that as well. So we'll get better, keep getting better. Yeah?
All right, so we're planning, our next meeting is January tenth, so have a great Christmas holiday, and we'll see you either here or at the outdoor. We'll see, so with that, we'll stay adjourned at eight oh nine.